The October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Carleton School District Board of Directors is called to order. Let's start off with a pledge with our new principal. Ms. Mazak, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Director Apple?
Here.
Director Frank?
He's not able to be here tonight.
Director Honchar?
He is not able to be here tonight.
Director O'Brien?
Here.
Director Puskars?
Here.
Director Simpson?
Here.
Director Boziana?
Here.
Director Zalewski?
She is not able to be here tonight.
Director Schreiber?
Here. So there's a time at the beginning of each meeting where we invite the public to ask any questions about items that are on our agenda. Does anybody in the audience wish to ask a question about an agenda item tonight? If not, we'll move on, and I'll remind people that there is a time at the end to ask general questions. Starting off with minutes from previous meetings, I undertake a motion to approve the minutes from the voting meeting of September twentieth, twenty twenty-two, and the minutes of the committee meeting on October eleventh, twenty twenty-two. I have a motion for those two items.
Similar. Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you very much. Any discussion?
I can't. I wasn't here on September twentieth, so I can't go on that long.
So you're going to abstain on that?
Yeah.
That portion of it. All right. Any other clarifications? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries and?
Not even the extension.
Director Simpson's standing on the first of the two.
September the one.
September the one. Thank you. Reports. So I'll report that we had an executive session prior to this meeting where we discussed personnel matters, real estate, and student matters. And I'll turn to Dr. Crater for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Director Schreiber. In addition to the superintendent's report, we do have two administrative reports this evening. The first will be from Mr. Mike Lachren, principal of the junior senior high school. Mike is going to give us an update on junior senior high school and how things are going so far this year. Mr. Lachren.
All right. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be back in front of the board. Wanted to update you on things going on at the senior junior senior high school, broken into a couple of different frameworks. The first is instruction and learning. We have probably about a third of the faculty observed so far, and in that, we near the end of the nine weeks, we've seen a lot of different instruction delivery, which is good to be back in the classroom. We're seeing a lot of collaborative work, group projects, text analysis, hauling, strengthening student skills in their voice so they have the ability to tell their story. This Friday, we have a professional development which will focus on co-teaching and data analysis with Ed Insight, our new course for the junior high, the WIN course. Have some time for the WIN instructors to meet, and ESL learner, as we have a broader number of ESL students in the district. Our chill room has been, we're starting year two, and we have a new classroom educator, Ms. Keely Savage, who's been a wonderful addition to our team. She has a great approach with the children and has set boundaries and given some expectations for how the room is supposed to be used and not abused. And she's also pushed into all of the WIN classes that I mentioned earlier in the first nine weeks, in the seventh and in the eighth grade. One of the highlights, special education, transition is making a huge splash this year. Couple of the things that I wanted to point out and threw some pictures up as well. The transition fair at Baldwin Senior High School is coming, and community work, instruction expands with a partnership with Cookie, Cookie Ice Cream, Cookie Cookie Ice Cream, where students can get an opportunity for employment. Mr. Pape has worked to expand our transition services to staff from new partners. And then also, the pictures are from the PIA Youth Summit, which was held at South Point. I think I'm missing the E on South Point. But two buddies and two students with disability attended the Leadership Summit, and there are about ten to fifteen different districts that come to this. And students are do group work, give presentations, and work on ideas. And it's just a great idea, and it's all under the umbrella of Special Olympics. Further, we have the Disability Mentoring Day coming up this week for transition as well. In addition, we have the PACE Lab, which Mr. Pape applied for the grant last year, and it's up and running. The PACE Lab is a career training program provided to students through our Life Skills Program. Basic vocational skills and life skills that relate to most careers. And they're skills that are needed for vocational training placement and independent living. You know, a couple of images of the remodeled PACE room upstairs. Ms. Lewis and a couple of her students and a student going over the assignments for the week. And it's like a mini job site in the room. The kids are engaged in different activities, and each, all the colors indicate a different unit of study throughout the lab. And it's a very intensive, but it's driven by assessment and how the student does in each domain. Our mentoring program is continuing to expand. Ms. Barnes and Mr. Banazek are getting ready to launch the peer-to-peer mentoring program where our older junior and senior high, juniors and seniors mentor the junior high students. Mrs. Mitchell, earlier, either late in September or early October, had the first best buddies meeting after school when there were over, close to twenty students participating. Our Stars Partnership led the students and their buddies attending the Camp of Champions at Lisbon Forward. It's a fall event. And our Special Olympics Unified Sports is going to expand, offering a new Special Olympics sport of flag football. And we're doing it with our two partners that we've had a very strong rapport with over the last ten years, Elizabeth Forward and Baldwin. And those three districts will start with the flag football. Partner Up has been a tremendous success. Mr. Canty has done a fabulous job of this. Our cohort last year, six students obtained full employment through the PNC partnership with Partner Up. And then this year, we had nineteen students enroll in the program who are working to get employment, gain full employment for the next year. So our numbers are increasing, and I think we have the most students of all schools participating that came out with the job in twenty-one, twenty-two.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So is that just with PNC, or are there other employers involved or not?
The partners change a little bit every now and then, so it's hard for me to keep up. It's PNC, FedEx.
Duquesne Light?
Duquesne Light. Pardon me?
Comcast.
Comcast, and there are, there are two or three other ones.
Yeah, McCullough.
UPOC.
Yeah, AHN, I think.
Pardon me?
AHN, I think.
An AHN. Yeah, which is unique because AHN and UPOC are in the same program, which is exciting. So we're really looking forward to that. They just had their meeting two weeks ago, and this room was filled. And it was good to see the students engaged. Early on in the program, you get a lot of black stares, but then, as the program progresses and the curriculum progresses, and you get to the interview days and the practice rounds of the interviews, it's exciting because the kids get nervous and they get excited, and they're going through and have an opportunity to practice an interview process. And it's kind of like a culminating project for all of the lessons that they've had previously. And that then markets them to have their real interviews at the conclusion of the program.
Hey, Mike?
Yes?
Have we brought those six students back and had them talk to their underclass peers and?
I saw one of them at the football game and asked if he would do that, and actually nudged his younger brother in school last week to do just that. I, and as I did that, I kind of hesitated because I want, I want them also to have a little bit of substance longevity in their position so that when they come and share their experience, it's not, yeah, I've had this job for three weeks and I'm still learning. So that they can give a little bit more relevant, real-life experience.
I would think for the kids to see their, their older peers have gone through a program and be successful and have a job, maybe with some experience, I like your point, but I can't think of something that's more powerful for them than to see something that they know and recognize, having had success, that gives them something to work towards and.
And I, and I share the same mindset. And related to that thought process, saw a recent graduate, an ESL student, who graduated from Robert Morrison three years, and had the conversation with him, hey, I'd like you to come back and talk to some of the kids in the ESL program just so that they can see exactly the same thing that you're bringing up for the Partner Up. Homecoming was a tremendous success. I really want to applaud the efforts of Emily Phylis, the new business teacher. She took Homecoming on by storm. We had a wonderful pep rally. That's student teams doing Hungry Hippo, which was one of the most creative ideas I've seen. They had one person grabs their legs, and they ride on a scooter, and they have laundry baskets and try to collect balls. It was, it was pretty neat to see, and I have to say that in ten years, I think it was the greatest display of school spirit because when the classes were doing their cheers, I mean, it was like, wah! They were going, they were getting at it, and it seemed like everybody was having fun. And then the parade was a success, and a great festivity for the crowning ceremony, the king and the queen. Safety in the community. Teachers are on hall duty, and we have our e-hall pass, which has been a great purchase. And I want to thank the technology department for helping us orchestrate that. The hallways are very empty. The teachers are doing a fantastic job of making sure the kids are in their seats. At community events, our relationship with the Carnegie Police Department, Crafton Police Department, and Robinson has been fantastic. Robinson has been up here, I'd say, four times in the first nine weeks just to have a bit of a presence and a couple of walk-throughs on a weekly basis, and then they check the lots as well. So we're always looking to improve our safety. I'll touch upon that a little bit later. At the junior senior high school and across the district, we have a partnership with the Pennsylvania State Police Department for risk and vulnerability analysis. We were at Carnegie. Mr. Jones, myself, and Jenna were there, meeting with the state trooper, and we had a four-hour meeting and then walked through the building. Tomorrow, Officer Vanderack, I think, decided will be at the high school. And he, at all buildings, he checks the lighting and the doors in the evening hours, and then he sees drop-off, and then an assessment meeting with building leaders and technology. Our safety week was a success. At the junior senior high school, we did our evacuation to reunification point at Pensbury, which was a new step. We've had instructions on the plan for a year, and this is the first time that we took the kids to the site, and it went flawlessly. We, I really want to thank Pensbury and their leadership for providing extra people. We got there, and there were eight or ten people in vests directing us, and it was a success. And we got in and out in like twenty-three minutes. It was, it was very efficient.
Mike, how many of the kids here across the road?
So Carnegie Police Department and Robinson Police Department had Baldwin Road blocked here and down here, and then Kings Highway was also blocked. It was, and it was a good practice, I think, also for the police because they're all working together across the department as well. So it was nice to see different systems working together.
Thanks.
Our SAP services, our teachers continue to closely monitor and use SAP. And that's a Student Assistance Program to, for students who are facing barriers to learning. In our model, the first level is a teacher mentoring check-in point. And then our team meetings are twice a month on Wednesdays, and we have thirty-five or so teachers trained at the junior senior high school, a fifty-one, which is tremendous. And this year, we had fifty-three referrals up to this point, and last year, I think it was forty-six. So we're a little bit more in terms of referrals. Our, and with this process, you have to get a parental signature, and our parental signature rate is, is in the seventy percent, seventy percent range, which is much higher than other districts in the region. The average, I think, is around fifty for getting a parental permission. So that shows, that tells me that the community is trusting the process and believes in it. And I want to thank you for all the support that you've given to the building level and also to the district for continuing to grow our SAP team because it is effectively used, and it's a cornerstone of our services. Communication this year, the guidance department has launched a new tool to streamline information to help families with that information, and it's called the SMOON newsletter. Let me see if I can click that. Can you get that? I don't know if you had a chance to see this yet, but this is fantastic. So this is a spot where you can push out all of the things related to guidance and specifically at the secondary level, if you scroll down a little bit. Gives you ideas of things that are going on, October being a bully production month, and then also testing, AP testing, Power School, and how-to videos for parents can use as well. And it's been fantastic, and I really want to applaud Mrs. Carrie Gallagher, our guidance secretary. She's kind of taken this initiative and taken some ownership of it, working with Mr. Canty and Mrs. Barnes, and they have done a great job. So try to get all the questions that you would have if you wanted to come to the office or call. Giving you everything here, and then I can hear Mrs. Gallagher saying, oh, yeah, you can check this too, and you can see this on, on the SMOON newsletter. And upcoming dates for testing as well. So that has been a tremendous asset because that's one of the goals in the school this year, is to increase the communication from the building to the community.
Mike, do you know if there's a link to that SMOON site on our main homepage?
I don't, I'm not sure if there is yet, but I'll work with Miss Ford to make sure that we can get that.
Fantastic.
And that does my report. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to field them.
Thank you. Just a lot of very comprehensive, and a lot of great things going on. Staff, students, as far as the engagement with the kids, a lot of great services that are being provided to our kids. I think you gave a really nice, comprehensive review there of the chill room, the SAP, the PACE Lab. You covered everything from diverse group of our students that are receiving excellent services from, from our staff and from our administrative team.
I just wanted to close on one thing. We, today, yesterday, and today, Mr. Milson and I went to a workshop on restorative practices, and that's to provide alternatives to suspension, to keep kids in the chair in the classrooms. And in the presentation, we have done everything that the presenter was presenting and more than what felt was giving us feedback on. So we are so far ahead of the curve, it was refreshing to see, to see that. So I was pretty excited about that as well.
I agree. It's valuable training. I think it validates a lot of what we do here locally in the Carleton School District. And I think it's also things that you could probably take your team and take them on the road and probably do just as nice of a job, if not better of a job, to showcase the different types of strategies we implement with our, with our children and provide the services. We also had Dr. Sertie, Mr. Don Alexander, elementary teacher, second grade down at Carnegie. Mrs. Dunker from the junior senior high school presented at AHN Mental Health Workshop last week. I also presented on panel of superintendents as well. So it's a lot of what he covered there with the chill room as well, that we've made a really great partnership with them and taking a lot of what we're learning and sharing with, with others in the region, I think is professionally validating.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have our pupil services report, Sarah Hoffman.
Good evening. So there's just a quick update regarding pupil services, an overview of, I'm not going to go in depth about every program, but please stop if you have any specific questions. But basically, what my office does, and it's not just me, it is a team of people, anywhere from our administrative assistants to our school psychologists. I mean, the principals, it's just, it's a collaborative effort, our guidance, our school counselors. It's, it's everyone, our homeschool visitor. So what we do is we look at programming to help remove barriers that students may have for learning. Next slide, please. So the first thing I want to go over the programming is special education. And we have to offer continuum of services to look at FATE, which is a free, appropriate public education. So we go anywhere from my parent, which is the least amount, all the way to full-time. And that could be within the building full-time or could be out placed at an outside school if that's where the IEP team feels that that's where the child is able to best meet their needs. We have all these different types of services and supports available. Learning, emotional, life skills, autistic support, speech, stands by itself, gifted. And we do have some kids, we have about five of them right now, that are duly diagnosed where they receive special education services as well as gifted services. So if this doesn't stand alone. Deaf, hard of hearing, blind, elderly impaired, and multiple disabilities. Then if they qualify for an IEP and those services, they also could qualify for related services as well. And there is a list of our related services that the district offers. Some are in-house, and we have our own staff, and some of them we have to contract out for, such as our occupational and physical therapy. We don't have our own OT or PET, so we do contract with some of those services. Vision and hearing and O and M, we do contract with the Allegheny Intermediate Unit for those services because there's so far and few between, we don't have several students that receive those types of services. Nursing as well, in-house. We also have parent professional support, instructional, life skills, and autistic support. And then we also have some students that do meet the criteria for a one-on-one personal care aid. Right now, we currently have two hundred and twenty-seven students in the district and out of the district that qualify for services. Out of two hundred and twenty-seven, a hundred and eighteen are at the elementary level. Seventy-nine are at Carnegie, and thirty-nine are at Crafton currently. I just pulled the statistics this morning. And at the high school, we have a hundred and nine students. Gifted, we have, that's, okay. Okay, so this is our transition services. These are for services for any students that turn fourteen up to twenty-one. If you do qualify for an IEP, it is an IEP team decision, and you could maintain coming to school until you're age twenty-one, where you would age out. Those are for students that typically graduate on IEP goals. They don't need to meet the criteria to accumulate credits. Those are for your students that are in more complex needs typically. But what we do is we have to look at, sorry, we have to look at students that, as they turn fourteen. So Mr. Pape is our special education transition coordinator, and he works with students that have missed turn thirteen, starts having conversations with the students and the families about where they would like to see them regarding anywhere from employment, independent living, education, what, what do they want to do. This year, we do have some exciting stuff happening. Mr. Lachren touched upon it. We have the PACE Lab, which we got through a grant last year, and he went really nice in depth with that. But it's hands-on career training, and we're looking at it as like a prerequisite for students if they want to go into vocational training or out in the community. So our vocational training kind of breaks up into two different areas. This is newer this year. We have Mont Valley Vocational Programming, and it's not taking anything away from Parkway, but with Parkway, they have industry credentials. So you have, when they're, when you're at Parkway, their staff prepare you to go out. You have to meet that criteria, for example, cosmetology. You walk out of there, you meet the criteria, their hours, you get a certificate saying, hey, you're now a licensed cosmetologist. Well, unfortunately, you have, you know, are some of the students that are in, that receive special education services are unable to maintain that based upon their disability. So instead of saying, no, you can't do anything vocational, we do have an option at Mont Valley. And they have, they meet the child where they are. And I'm not trying to take anything away from Parkway that they don't, but they're limited, and they have high standards in order to go out and get, have a job right out of school. Mont Valley, they meet them where they're at, and they work with them continually for as long as they need to. We currently have one student that is participating down there in the program, and it is a half-a-day program, very similar to Parkway. And a student goes down there, comes back half-day, takes the other classes in the afternoon, depending upon what they would need. We are looking to expand it, but taking it nice and slow. We don't want to jump in with everything. And what we've asked them to do is the student to, you know, share with the other students how it's going. And we do have a couple more students that are interested, so we might be looking at that in the spring, maybe transitioning a couple down there or another school year. We also have Parkway, and then the other thing is for our seniors, the Office of Vocational Rehabilitation, or OVR. That's where Mr. Pape invites OVR representatives to come in, and they can help the students see if they are eligible for services after high school. It can be anywhere from helping them maintain a job, should be funding sometimes for schooling. It just depends upon what it is. Students are not entitled to OVR services. It's based upon eligibility. Where if you qualify for an IEP for your school age, you are entitled to those services. So it's a little different, and you have to have those conversations with families because you think they're automatically, they get them. But that is another service that we do offer for our, our students receiving special education services. Mental health, we have two different carriers we're contracting with right now. Allegheny Health Network, which is at Carnegie and the high school, and then Wesley Family Services. Next year, we will be transitioning to Allegheny Health Network at Crafton as well. I know, and they're going to do a mobile children, they're going to do for, I think, two weeks. Is that correct, Marsha?
It's three weeks throughout the year.
Three weeks. Okay, throughout the year. So they'll come, kind of get them prepared, work with the students. It is such a, really unique. Marsha probably has more information when she presents later on, but that's what they're going to start out with that this year. We also have SAP program. Nursing, we are looking currently for nurse's aide and another certified school nurse. We are filling the vacancies right now through contact with agencies because we do need to have a nurse in each building. And right now, like I said, if you know of anyone, send them our way, if they can sub, we'll try to get them whatever we can, whatever we can get because they're, they're really strapped, and it stinks when we have to close stuff down because we can't get the help. But there is a massive shortage for nursing as well, if you're not aware. And that's just not with the hospitals, but it's also in the schools, so. We've gifted, we have the universal screener. We currently have twenty-nine students that qualify for gifted services. We have massive exit last year from the senior class. So again, we're looking to screen the second and sixth grade classes at Crafton and Carnegie. Hopefully, we can get some of those kids that we're missing. And or any parents or teacher recommendations that we have, they can also, you know, we've started evaluation that way as well. Five oh four service agreements, we have fifty-nine of those that qualify within the district currently. And that would be any child, for example, diabetes. I know diabetes kind of exploded after COVID, a lot of kids, autoimmune diseases. So if it brings to us, the parent says, hey, my child just got diagnosed with diabetes, we get that medical information, develop a five oh four, and go from there. Sometimes it's also as simple as anxiety. When I say simple, sometimes they do qualify for an IEP or a five oh four, but they're still, we're going to put some supports in place, accommodations to help them out throughout the school day. English as a second language, or ESL. We currently have different types of interpreting. We have in-person and remote. That's where the person comes in and helps translate. As you know, we do have a large ESL population, and we currently have ninety-five students. Now, I know, and we're hearing that it is growing. It is. It's growing, but right now, we have a lot of families that are overseas. Right, they said October. They said October, November was a time where a lot of flights were cheaper, and a lot of families go home to visit their families overseas. So we do have a lot of kids, families coming back in the country, they leave for a couple weeks and then come back in. So we sit a little, about 100, like I said, give or take. The elementary is getting larger, and the high school, it's getting larger as well. We just did not have a lot of students that exited through the, we did test last year, so they, they go unmonitored. So we still have students that do, they don't qualify for the services anymore, but they are monitored. We've had a lot of new kids coming in at the elementary level, and then the secondary, we didn't have any that met the criteria to exit services, which was, is discouraging. That's nothing that, you know, we're trying to have as much control over getting kids exited from services, but if they need it, then they need it. We also have, we use translation of documents, and we do partnerships with Literacy Pittsburgh and Hello Neighbor, so that's been going pretty well this year. We also do, I also have monitored home education programs, and those are homeschool and private tutor. And we have about 20 students right now on homeschool, and that's where they find someone to educate them outside of the public school, but they do have the ability to still participate in extracurricular activities. And private tutor is different, we have one family that does private tutoring. We do homebound instruction, again, that's a temporary excuse from compulsory attendance for an illness or some other urgent medical reason. And it is for two, if you're out for more than two consecutive weeks, and no more than three months. I just want to put this up here because I, some people have confusion with homebound, instruction in the home, so I just wanted to kind of clarify that. Right now, we don't have anyone on homebound instruction. That's when the teachers then would go into the home after school and provide that support. We do have instruction in the home, which is different, it's a special education placement, and that's typically for someone that would be so ill or due to the nature of their complexity that you're just not physically able to go to school. We don't have anyone right now there either. And then we do cyber school, we partner with Senate Valley School District. Dr. Mantech, do we have about 20, 22 students in cyber offhand?
I think it's more by 18.
18, okay, so we sit there, we've had a nice partnership with them. Foster care, I participated in a regional meeting last week up in Seven Springs, and that was quite interesting. Just some interesting facts that kind of blew my mind was, last year, in 2021, Pennsylvania had 20,491 students or children placing foster care. Allegheny County had 1,200, out of the 1,200, 900 were school age students, so that would, it affects so many people in just about every single district. They said the average stay for a foster student is 21 months, and they'll be staying with their family, that family. And then the other thing that we learned was, I knew last year, but in January, it had come out, but they're waiting for some policies to roll with it regarding, it's called Act One, and that's where it's to really promote equity to educational opportunities for students that experience homelessness, foster, or are in the juvenile system, they're juvenile delinquents. So what they want you to do is, and again, we're waiting for some policy, but the guidance has been, we want to make sure that we collect all the information from as many schools and placements from that child, and compile it together and get them on track for graduation. There was a speaker there, and she had experienced this, and here she was in Pittsburgh Public, then she went to Philadelphia, was bounced around to 16 different places. And she found out in the end, she had dropped out of school, came back, wanted to see what she needed to do to go to school, and when they compiled the records, they asked the IU to help, she already had met graduation requirements. And it was just heartbreaking, and she's, this happened in 2010, and she said, you know, I'm here, I'm part of it, I understand, and I'm glad that they have it, but this is how it can help impact people. So she was able to get a diploma through Pittsburgh Public, which was, was awesome, and I commended her for sharing her story and being so, so open. But right now, we haven't had anyone that's, that's been that situation. We do have eight students that are homeless, experiencing homelessness in some nation, in some fashion, as well as six students in foster care in Carnegie. So we're pretty low compared to other districts. I wanted to put this up here just to kind of go through our statewide system of support. In the middle is the U.S. Department of Education, and then we have here, this stuff gets pushed out to PVE, which is Pennsylvania Department of Education, then it goes to the Bureau of Special Education sometimes, and other things that, that doesn't apply to special education, it goes to Patton, which is our regional center up in Harmanville. Then that gets pushed, the information gets pushed to the intermediate units, and then LEAs are local school districts. So this is kind of the flow. Some people like to know how things get started and where it goes. It's not like we just decide if we're going to do things, it gets pushed out at the, at the, those different levels. We have some professional development and supports, I don't know why it went purple, but that's okay. So we typically work with Patton, they offer different types of trainings and support, professional developments, and then our intermediate units, and we have one of the best intermediate units out there, I have to tell you. The TAC team is called Training and Consulting, they offer all these different types of supports and services. I have hit just about every single one of them except for the MTSS, that's the only one I have not touched while I've been here, but we've really, intensive interagency coordination, I have not had to use right now, but those are for students that no one will take them because their behavior is so difficult or whatnot, and it's very challenging sometimes, but the IU's have really been instrumental with helping provide supports for myself and other staff members and students. Any questions?
Thank you.
Good to hear.
Thank you, Mrs. Hoffman. And just some updates, superintendent report, just a couple things. On the, on the board agenda, we do have the agreement with Keystone Sports Construction, and during our recent building and building and grounds committee meetings, we've recently discussed the needs to explore some different alternatives to improve our facility at Honus Wagner Stadium. Honus Wagner Stadium, as you know, is home to a lot of athletic events, football, soccer, also provides a venue for our students to exhibit their skills, our marching band, auxiliary units, cheerleaders, and the field is also used for a variety of district celebrations as well as other community organizations who use our facility as well. At the present time, the stadium is, has, has some challenges, and we feel that we need to go through and address those issues. This agreement will allow Keystone Sports Construction to conduct a feasibility study on two of our locations, the current Honus Wagner Stadium and also the junior senior high school campus. So basically, what Keystone Sports Construction will do is they will go through, perform topographic survey, also some base mapping, they will go through and prepare some schematic designs and collect visionary types of designs to, to prepare at both of those locations, and then they'll provide the district with projected costs of associated improvements. Feasibility study will provide the district with a lot of different options to, for us to go through and consider. There's many things to take into consideration with a project of, of this nature. The feasibility study, I think, is the first of many steps to determine the most responsible decisions for use of district funding as we continue to make capital improvements throughout the district. As a district, we'll examine the strengths, weaknesses, the opportunities, and also the barriers to present themselves with, with each of those options. And then our goal is to share out the information with the public and collect feedback throughout the process. Also on the agenda, several grants for approval, there's the Grable Foundation has partnered with AASA, which is a national organization for school superintendents to advance action on improving educational services for students across the United States. Carleton is joining a large number of school districts across southwestern Pennsylvania as a part of the Learning 2025 Initiative. So the funding of this grant, I think it's a little bit over $22,000, 22,77, I think, be used for professional learning, attendance at regional and national conferences, networking, and consulting with leaders in the field for school improvement. We recently went to a workshop at the Energy Innovation Center to, to take a look at profile of a graduate, which is some of the work that we're going to bring back, recently shared with the administrative team. On Thursdays of each month, the group is running professional development sessions, and throughout the process, each of our administrators will have the opportunity to either attend the local workshops or some state or national types of conferences. So it's a great opportunity, we're very fortunate for the Grable Foundation to support western Pennsylvania in that, in that light. During Mrs. Hoffman's presentation, she mentioned diabetes and the issue of diabetes being so prevalent as a result of COVID. The American Diabetes Association is partnering with the district at Crafton Elementary School so that students can learn more about diabetes, the complications, and how to improve the lives of others that are affected with diabetes. So students will have the opportunity to interact with different types of activities, and that'll be delivered through the health instruction during the regularly scheduled classrooms. We also have the IMPACT Grant, that's at Carnegie Elementary School, that will help support the Free Store 15106. That's through the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank. The Free Store, as I think we've shared before, relies heavily upon the volunteer work of both our students and our teachers at Carnegie Elementary School, and it benefits our community by providing food and other basic supplies. So across the board, the district is very grateful for community and philanthropic organizations that support our local community. Also, shout out to Carleton Education Foundation, they are hosting an upcoming Purse Bingo, that'll be held on Friday, November the 4th.
You're stealing my thunder, John.
Sorry, it's at St. Simon's Church on Green Tree Road. Tickets are $30, you can buy them in advance, $35 at the door, begins at 6 o'clock for check-in, first game will be played at 7 o'clock, and all the proceeds do circle back and benefit the Carleton School District with different types of grants and programming. More information can be found on carleton.org, that is, carleton.org. Also, upcoming events, parent and teacher conferences. If you recall, we did restructure a little bit this year with the way that our, our parents were able to interact with our teachers. We moved open house to meet the teacher night prior to the beginning of the school year, gave parents the opportunity to meet with teachers prior to their students coming and reporting to, to school. And then we also shifted and created parent teacher conferences. They will be held on Tuesday, November the 8th, that's Election Day, that'll take place between 11:00 and 6:00 p.m., with a break in there between 3:00 and 4:00 o'clock. Parents will have the opportunity to sign up online using Sign Up Genius, they'll sign up for 15-minute conference intervals with each of the teachers. So it's a great way to touch base, 15 minutes, although it seems short, in 15 minutes, you can get a lot accomplished by meeting with your classroom teachers and learning more about what's taking place and be able to hash out some concerns or receive some validation on, on how your child is doing in the classroom. So a lot of great things happening here, evidence of, of the reports, I think, that we received here from our administrative team. Once again, off to a great start to the school year, coming in towards the end of the first marking period at the end of October. Also, a special shout out, I already said that to Carleton Foundation, I don't want to steal the thunder again. But Wendy Steiner, I did not mention Wendy Steiner is our new auditorium manager. She took over for Dennis McDade, has been doing a terrific job. It's a, it's a big lift with all the different types of events. Carleton does not sleep as far as their facilities, so there's a lot of events that take place, but very appreciative of the, the new backdrop, the new table skirts, those kind of things just as little amenities towards creating a nice environment for us. So thank you, Wendy, for everything you can do in that capacity. That takes our one-hour administrative reports. Turn it back over to you, Director Sharer.
Thank you. I hope you're here for a little bit. Committee reports, Parkway West, Director Apple, anything you want to share about Parkway West?
Well, I gave a pretty extensive report last, last month. This month was a lot quieter. We had a meeting first Tuesday of the month, as always, and mostly, you know, talked about the beginning of the school year, which is going well. I guess, I guess the ongoing things out there have more to do with, you know, what kind of, what kind of selection students are making for their, their career and technical education choices. So, you know, it continues to evolve, and it wasn't on the agenda, but Dr. Copeland and administrators out there are looking to take a trip maybe sometime soon, relatively soon, to some of the career technical centers out in the eastern part of the state to see what their offerings are, and he's kind of thinking that we might be looking to expand our healthcare career opportunities out there. There seems to be a demand for that, so, you know, nothing, nothing written stone yet, but that's through looking. So really, that's all I have, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Pathfinder, Director Honschar is not here tonight, anybody have any comments about Pathfinder?
They meet tomorrow.
Oh, thank you very much. You're at anywhere, is Director Honschar?
I don't know yet.
Director Honschar?
Probably.
Okay. Shazza, Director Zalinski is not here tonight, are you wearing anything?
No, I think last year reported, we'll get more information as we approach spring.
Gotcha, okay. Legislative PSBA, Director Simsek?
Well, I'll start with the foundation.
Is there something going on with the foundation?
Oh, yeah. So you heard about Purse Bingo, but what you didn't hear about Purse Bingo is that we could still use sponsors for purses, so that's a new thing that we're doing this year. So if anybody wants to advertise their business or get word out and would like to sponsor purse, please contact the foundation, because we would love to advertise on your behalf and fundraise all at the same time. We're also talking about possibly having, bringing Taste of Carleton back in the spring, so that's exciting. And, you know, I just want to say, like, you know, the people who have been doing the foundation for so, these fundraisers are well-known, and they're, you know, just managed in such a professional and good way that, you know, I think we were probably sold out for Purse Bingo. And that happened like right away, because people enjoy the event so much.
We didn't put one yard line up, nothing, and we were sold out.
Yeah, so it's, you know, it's a, it's a highly regarded event, and that says a lot about the, you know, the people who have been on the foundation and have grown that event from year to year. They do a great job. So that's what I had for foundation. As far as legislative, PSBA, I have a couple of things, just little tidbits I pick up along the way and think, hmm, maybe we should share this. Talking points regarding unequal access to educational opportunities in Pennsylvania. So Pennsylvania students consistently score above the national average on overall student achievement. The state's achievement gaps between white and black students and white and Hispanic students though are consistently among the worst in the country. So this was a report done by the Research for Action, and what they found out is that white students in Pennsylvania are provided greater access to educational opportunity compared to white students in most states. In contrast, black and Hispanic students in Pennsylvania are provided less access to educational opportunities than black and Hispanic students in most states. Pennsylvania's gaps in access to educational opportunity are among the largest when it comes to providing equal opportunity across racial and income groups, ranking the state in the bottom two in the nation. So that was, that was a little upsetting to read that. So two factors that they think contribute to Pennsylvania's deep racial inequity. First, black and Hispanic students are disproportionately enrolled in high poverty schools, and those schools provide less access to educational opportunity. Second, even within schools with medium and high concentrations of poverty, white students are more likely than black and Hispanic students to be enrolled in those schools that provide greater access to educational opportunity. So to help policymakers and the public further understand educational opportunity in Pennsylvania and across all 57 states, this RFA group, the Research for Action, has created an educational opportunity dashboard, so if you would want to go to their website and look at that. You know, and they want policymakers in the educational community should prioritize closing these gaps to ensure that race and income don't continue to dictate access to high-quality education as well as youth. So that was something that I wanted to share. COSPA put out just, you know, bills that they think that, you know, we should keep an eye on and want to watch, and the one that they're highlighting is the workforce an eye on and want to watch, and the one that they're highlighting is the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act of 2022. So the authorization for workforce innovation and opportunity expired in 2020. Federal investment in workforce development has fallen markedly over time. While the U.S. labor force has grown by roughly half over the past four decades, federal spending on workforce development has fallen by two-thirds. So since 2002, workforce formula programs have seen a roughly 45% decline in enacted federal funding when adjusted for inflation. As a result, essential workforce development services are frequently unavailable to the people who need them most. So about the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act of 2022, it reauthorizes and strengthens our nation's workforce development system. It fully funds Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act programs by authorizing roughly $80 billion over six years, which will allow the workforce system to train 1 million workers by the year of 2028. It also establishes a permanent Department of Labor program to help individuals released from incarceration transition back to employment and access to sustainable career pathways. It extends summer and year-round job programs for youth. It strengthens the quality of the job corps program, codifies partnerships between employers and community colleges, and strengthens industry and sector partnerships to better meet the needs of both employers and employees. So Susan, I'm sure you're aware of this, is on your radar, but, you know, when I see things like this, I think I'm just happy when we have people from the public come in who maybe don't see these things, so that's why I like to share it. So that's what I had.
Good.
Thank you.
I promise that I did not plant that one. For kind of clarity, the WEOA was reauthorized in 2016.
Oh, okay.
It replaced WEA, which had been passed in 1999. So it took 16 years to get new workforce development legislation passed, and you know how quickly the workforce changes and the ways that we hire people change. So WEOA has passed the House. It will very likely not pass the Senate at this point in time because the election is coming up right now. So after that, then things will kind of go back to the drawing board in all likelihood. But this idea that WEOA helps to take those students who have graduated from high school and need help connecting into what comes next is really important one. So anything we can do to make sure we're connecting our kids into the kind of workforce development world is a good one.
What is your sense for this being passed? Is there hope, or is it one of those things that you think just keeps, gets kicked down the road?
I think in the next two to three years, we'll see some movement on it for sure. I don't think it'll take 16 years this time.
That'd be good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Yep.
Thanks, Chris. All right, any questions for our reports? If not, we'll move on. Under Section 4 miscellaneous, we have seven items. I'll entertain a motion to approve the following. Number one, the contract with interim healthcare Pittsburgh, Inc. as attached. Number two, the professional services agreement with Keystone Sports Construction to conduct a feasibility study is outlined in the attached agreement, subject to review, subject to a review by our solicitor. Number three, to approve and accept a grant from the Grabal Foundation in the amount of $22,275 to be used for the district's participation in the Western PA Learning 2025 Alliance. Number four, the agreement between HASSO and Carleton School District for the Student Assistance Program as submitted. Number five, the vendor agreement between the American Diabetes Association and the Carleton School District. Number six, the grant from the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank in the amount of $800. And number seven, the additions to the list of conferences for the 2022-23 school year as submitted. I have a motion for those seven items under Section 4.
Send it. Second.
Move to second, thank you. Any questions?
A couple of things. I think the grant from the Grabal Foundation participation in Western PA Learning 2025 Alliance is very generous and I'm grateful for that. And I'm grateful to Dr. Kreider for letting us into this. I think it's going to benefit our students in our community by, you know, raising standards and methods we use to, you know, educate our kids and hopefully do something to address the gap that Director Simsek was talking about. And then the other thing I wanted to comment on was the agreement with Keystone Sports Construction. I just want to be clear that as long as I've been here on the board, we've known that there needs to be some, that facilities are calling out for some upgrades maybe and enhancements.
And on this line?
Yeah, right. And I think that, you know, if you look at the things we've done at the elementary schools, the high school, all those sorts of projects, we've really demonstrated commitment to making our facilities as good as they can be with the understanding that, you know, the students benefit from a learning environment that's attractive, safe, convenient, all that stuff. All that said, I don't have any predisposed notions about what we ought to be doing as far as on this wire field or, you know, I just don't think that we can make any rational decisions or plans until we have basic grounded, you know, information. And to me, that's all this is, you know, so we're all kind of looking at the same information, and then, you know, board and administration and the public can have a rational discussion about how we want to go forward with it. But until you have that, you know, basic information, I don't feel like we can have those discussions in a rational way. So I'm in favor of it. It's not inexpensive at all, and, you know, I think that, you know, everyone on this board takes seriously the stewardship of the community's tax dollars. But that said, whenever you look at what any potential kind of projects might be, I think it's money well spent, money would be spent anyway, and probably a small percentage of the what the total cost of any project would be should we decide to embark on the project, so just want to put that out.
This information would be necessary no matter what decision we made, so, you know, we have to have the information before we move forward. It doesn't bind us to anything, really, other than just provide us with information.
Good point. Any other questions or comments? Then we can vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Under Section 5 Finance, we have three items. I'll entertain a motion to approve number one, the bills from September 23rd through October 17th, 2022, in the amount of $2,395,392.77. Number two, the budget transfers for October 2022 as submitted. And then number three, the following reports as a part of the October 2022 financial report packet, the September 2022 Treasures Report, Investment Report, Board Summary Report, Athletic Fund Report, and Junior Senior High School Activities Fund Report. Do I have a motion for those three items under Section 5?
Send it.
Move to second, thank you. Any questions or discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Under Section 6 Personnel, we have two items. I'll entertain a motion to approve number one, the personnel agenda as submitted, and then number two, to approve Dennis McDade as an independent contractor at the rate of $350 per day, not to exceed more than 15 days, to provide transition training and consulting work. I have a motion for those two items.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, thank you. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Under...
Director, we do have one individual who was on the personnel agenda with us this evening. That's Mr. Al Peter. Al was with us this evening. He joins us from the Riverdale School District where he has had 30-some years of experience working in the field of custodian, lead custodian, an Act 93 position, and has worked his way up through the positions there. Currently a director of facilities and maintenance over there. We're very pleased to have him with us here this evening, and we welcome him on board as a cougar. And Al, I'll turn things over to you to introduce yourself.
I look forward to the opportunity and thank the board for the support, and just ready to jump in and start meeting more people and meeting staff, and just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for talking to us.
Appreciate it.
And Al took some personal time last week to be here with Mr. McDade, just as a brief orientation, but then the other motion on there is to have Mr. McDade come back for some time to share the keys to the castle. Go vote for him.
That's appreciated. Thank you very much for the support.
Al, you have some big shoes to fill, but Dennis speaks very highly of you, so it sounds like you're a perfect fit.
I'm glad to be on board. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks, sir.
Absolutely.
Under Section 7, we have one item for approval. I'll entertain a motion to approve the additions to the list of field trips for the 2022-23 school year as submitted. I have a motion for that item.
So moved.
Chris, thank you.
Second.
Jessica, thank you, second. Any questions or discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Old business, any director of any old business they'd like to bring up?
New, the old business I would talk about would be, again, the Carleton Education Foundation and the golf outing. The golf outing was a huge success. Dr. Manich, I think, one of the take-home baskets, correct? Did you win one of the baskets?
Yeah, I got the car.
Car cleaning kit.
Yeah, but I told my wife she won a basket of cheer.
Yep. That was all. And I think the highlight of the event, taken straight out of Caddyshack, the day there, we got some torrential downpour. I was playing with Director Schreiber as we approached the 10th hole. It was actually pouring down rain, soaking wet. The 10th hole is a par three. Director Schreiber eagled that hole with a hole-in-one. It only cost the team, I think, an additional $80 to get that hole-in-one, but it was a great event, again, by the foundation. Anything they do, they do it well. They put their name behind it, and it was a great event, well-attended. The sponsors are terrific to pitch in and support us at that level, so it was a great event, and definitely recommend any Carleton Education Foundation event to anyone.
Absolutely. Where can they find out more information, Dr. Kreider?
That is at carleton.org.
Oh, okay.
Carleton.org.
Sorry. Okay. And Director Simsek, when is that Purse Bingo again?
November 4th.
Oh, right, thank you. And if they need more information, where can they go?
Carleton.org.
Any other old business, any director would like to bring up? How about new business? Any director of any new business they'd like to discuss? What's that website again, Dr. Kreider? Carleton.org, okay. Open forum, we have one person that signed up to speak in open forum. Ms. Chaita, do you have comments or questions for the board?
Hi, I'm Arlene Chaita. I'm a mother, grandmother, and the committee woman of Crafton. The Republican committee woman. Anyway, I worked hard. I've gotten about 36 signatures to have the Bible put back into the library here, and I was just wondering, too, what you would think of. I have a Christianity cult and religion comparison chart. It compares 20 different religions and cults to biblical Christianity. And that way, at the last meeting, they told me you have to have all the religions, so I came up with that, that maybe we could agree on that. And then I have an alert here from Brave Assembly. It's to defend biblical conservative values. What it is, it gives you alerts of if they're teaching transgender to a little child or to a student, and they alert you to where it's happening. And if you would like that information, I could give it to you.
I'd be delighted to accept that.
I wondered, do you have that type of books in your library about the GBTQ-type books in your library?
I'm not aware of all the books we have in our library. I think our principals in our library keep track of that, and I'm assuming all of our books are appropriate and age-appropriate and content-appropriate, so.
I'm wondering if you could, like, mail me or give me a book list of the ones in Crafton Elementary and Coliseum on the online, would that be possible?
Do we have a copy?
We can get a write-to-know, certainly.
Yeah, we can get you a write-to-know paperwork to ask for that, and then we would process that.
Okay, and if it would be easier for me to take it for, I'd be happy to do that, too.
Probably the write-to-know request would be the easiest way to facilitate it.
And also, I wanted to mention, too, when I came here for the May 17th meeting, I went on YouTube today to, like, to, you know, refresh what happened that day, and I noticed it was taken off, only the part with me on it.
Should have been... The video is not present at all?
No, the video is on, but I'm not included. All of a sudden, at the end, whenever I had that three or four minutes, it vanished. It's not on.
That's from the May?
May 17, 2022, and they had given me, like, three, five minutes, and I had presented the chief of God's List for little boys.
Yeah, what we'll do is we'll review that footage. We don't edit any of the footage, so whether it was an issue with the tape stopping or some reason, but we'll take a look at the...
But it was on up until today, and I had held up the Bible of children's Golden Bible, and I didn't know if I offended people by doing that.
We wouldn't have taken it off based on that.
It could have been a website glitch or something. We can look into it, but...
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Any other open forum questions or comments? You look very familiar, sir. Can you identify yourself?
Yeah, well, I'm Jack Bistic, and I live in Carnegie. I have two kids that graduated from Carleton High School. I just wanted to, first of all, I came, I wanted to do this last month. Unfortunately, I had a scheduling conflict, but I wanted to personally thank, first of all, Dr. Kreider for his support of the free lunch program. In the summer, we did the grab-and-go lunches at both elementary schools, but it was really a tricky situation, and without your support, Dr. Kreider, and Ed Nantich, and the rest of the, and the building principals, and the Airmark people, who are absolutely fantastic, we'd have never pulled it off this year because we started this, well, I started way back with Carnegie when I was the mayor, but since then, we started it after the pandemic, and the last three years we've done it, but the federal government had approved a grab-and-go lunch format. This year, they did not approve that grab-and-go lunch format at the beginning of the summer. They actually ended up approving it about, I would say, three-fifths of the way into the program of the summer, which, you know, when I was working with, I was working with the food bank originally, and it was just too cumbersome to even get it off the ground at that point. But, so we ran into a roadblock right at the beginning. Of course, I spoke with Jim Schreiber, Dr. Kreider, and they were able to solve that problem for us relatively quickly with Airmark providing lunches that we pay for, okay? And unfortunately, we weren't able to do it five days a week this summer, but we were able to do it three days a week, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and we still maintain the weekend bags on the Fridays. But I want to thank the school district for the support. Also, I want to throw in a couple other thank yous. Well, I have a little bit of a forum here, is the Crafton Ingram Rotary and with former teacher Jim Nagorski, fantastic support. I really appreciate their support to the program. It would never happen without them. I want to thank Crafton Giant Eagle. They stepped up to the plate because the program actually cost us nine, over $9,000 this year. That's, but we were able to do it through the support of a lot of different organizations like this, the Carnegie Elks, St. John's Evangelical Lutheran Church in Carnegie. All of them were huge supporters. Pastor Cheryl at St. John's was there, so I appreciate all of their support. Jim's wife, I could not do it without Jim's wife, Megan. I'm going to tell you right now, she's fantastic. Jim, I know you... Jim, I know you know that. Probably a lot of people on the board know that, but.
She would say them, say them down you.
No, it's not, it's not, it's about the community, how we were able to come together. And the program was extremely successful. We had a lot of participation, especially in Crafton. We had more participation in Carnegie than we have in the past. I want to thank Dawn Alexander and Mary Campbell for opening up the free store along with the Wednesday. So on our Wednesday program at Carnegie Elementary, not only did we provide the grab and go lunch, but they opened up the free store every Wednesday too to coincide with that. So we were able to coordinate all that and they took up their time to do that over the summer, so I really appreciate that. And I wanted to just check my notes, make sure I didn't miss anybody here that I want to thank. That's not, I think I have everybody, so I do want to thank everybody. It was a true community coordination and it definitely started with you, Dr. Kreider. So thank you very much. And then to filter down, Ed Nantich, you've been a great partner through this whole thing. Without you, I, you know, we wouldn't be able to do this either. So, but, and the school board support. So hopefully we can continue this program. I think going forward, the program is probably going to look like it's going to be something that we have, that we have to fund every summer, but we have some pretty good funding in place and I think we're ready to do that. So, but thank you very much.
Jay, thank you for coming up and saying something. I agree that Dr. Kreider was a catalyst. I think he's carrying the message of the board and the district that we want to support this kind of efforts that support our residents. I'll echo your comments about Jim Degorski and Megan Schreiber, but honestly, you are a catalyst for so much good in administrative, in the communities that we owe you a huge debt of credit.
No, no, it's a, it's a total effort, totally.
Your coordination, your effort, your tireless advocacy for so many folks in the district is, is helpful. So thank you very much.
And it is an honor, your honor to work with you. Right back at you.
Any other open forum questions or comments? If not, board members, any last minute questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Moved the second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We are adjourned, thank you.